Okay, I think we're ready to start at the public hearing. Flexible Development and Designing Terminus Foundation Plans for 1 and 5 Conker Road. And we are looking again at the flexible development plan for this property, which is not to say that we're looking at the house design for the property, just the flexible development plan. And we've given this hearing about a half an hour, maybe if we could discuss the plan, okay, in 15 to 20 minutes, that would give 15 minutes to the planning board and maybe a little bit of time for public comments and questions.
I'm just kind of finding, I mean, I know it was a bunch of people here, I don't know.
Ed Morse.
Chairman, for the record again, Mark Pogrowski representing EOM Leo. Have all of the members, I know that somebody joined us on a site line, have all of the members managed to get out to the property?
Yeah.
Maybe if I just, well Jay's sitting up. We were here about a year ago, I wasn't here, I got hired after that meeting, and I think that there was some, all that was really rolled out that night was the yield plan, the lotting plan, and it obviously was crude in terms of amenities to neighbors, some people may have gotten around to it yet, but in any event, there's been a whole boatload of progress made during the past year, largely thanks to Tom Ward, who was engaged on the border and a congress who helped as well.
Yeah.
And Kim, who I've forgotten, but who I remember well from Sears Road. So what you see here is about the Jay's sixth or eighth iteration of the plan. We're well past where we were a year ago.
Yeah. Good. With that introduction, Jay, why don't you go ahead and explain the plan for...
Sure. So since the sidewalk, we made two revisions to the plan that we were so, as I go through the plan, I'll point those out. So the proposal is basically to do the shared common driveway off, use the curved cut for 5 Conker Road that sits off Conker Road. Coming up through that section is when we return onto the section where 1 and 5 get combined, so here's the existing driveway for 5. We're going to basically screen out the first section here and move the rest of this pavement. Then we start getting onto the section of the existing driveway for 5 Conker Road. This is the first access for a new lot, so this driveway comes off, this is Lot 2, and this is one of the revisions that we made. At the sidewalk, we had the proposed house basically centered in the lot facing this way. Based on comments at the sidewalk, we want to, of course, take it, make it much closer to the actual road, and actually, I turned it to face the road, and what I did is I kind of just kicked the driveway, the garage, a little bit this way, and the reason why I did that was that you can see, basically, here's the tree line, and what I wanted to do was get it so, I didn't have a 90, and then created this little major pavement area in the front, instead of taking down trees, and I didn't want to put it up here, that maybe pushed this house further this way, so that this neighbor over here could get a glimpse of it. So by doing this, I was able to kick it up into here, get a small little driveway, little thumb turn around, and kind of get it into the corner as much as possible into the lot, to try to show as much of the house to the neighbors, uh, littles to the neighbors. So then we get back onto the main driveway section, and so we come through there, now this is sort of the exact same thing that was on the original approvals, our original sidewalk plan. Come up, come through, we come through the break in the wall on this side here, and then this is where we start getting into the meadow area. So then we start getting into this meadow area here, prior to that cut, it's basically the existing driveway, there's two driveways for Lot 3, one comes up to the Christine Court, the second one comes off into the garage under. What we have proposed here is basically just a footprint right on top of the existing house at 1 Conker Road, utilizing the exact same driveway, so we figured that was the best way to get to that house. Then we have the shared driveway coming up, going through the meadow area, coming back back into the forested area, and then it serves basically Lot 4 and 5. 4 comes under, it's Garage Under, to kind of work with the knoll situation that we have there, kind of put the house, the first floor be equal to the knoll, and then we can kind of use that elevation change, and just kind of use that. By doing that, we keep our elevations through these two lots the same, so we're not taking down any of the trees in between. And then we try to bring these as tight up as possible, so then we can kind of keep as much a buffer on the downgrading side. What we did here is that, this is the septic reserve area, so this is like a secondary middle work, so it's never really going to be used, our primary septic is in the front of the lot. So we figured by doing this, we made the intent of total 5, but by separating, we can still save all these trees. We are, the second revision that we made from the sidewalk was based on some comments that Alan had at the end. These are the additional plantings we discussed, just outside of the middle work between us and the director house.
The tough houses is Lot 1.
Yep, Lot 1.
Or whatever lot it is, isn't Lot 1 the first one you came to?
This is Lot 2, because Lot 1 is the biggest house. Yeah, Lot 2 right there, yeah.
One of the questions I have is why do all the contours die into the house at the...
On this backside?
On the backside.
This is us trying to, just without using any walls, letting the existing grates come in, this is, shows, basically shows a walkout from the house.
Yeah. Why not...
That's me just being a...
...walkout.
Yeah. You can, if we do that, I'm like, what happens is, it's still, you're still going to see a full, a full window section there, because it exposes basically, it's only using up about 2 feet of the foundation for the grades that go across, so you're going to see the rest of the foundational wall, and you can have windows there, so people can have a walkout from the interior, or that's the way, I just did it that way, but it's not necessarily...
We just want to do as low of the impact of that house as much as possible. I mean, I'd actually...
Is that so tight?
Well, it's up the slope, I'd actually keep the ridge height down too, so that, you know, it's no more than say, the ridge height's no more than say at 20 feet above the highest elevation, and work with bombers to, you know, to make it into a cottage style design, you know, something like that. So you're, you're trying to keep it, to hug the ground as much as possible, and keep, make it as, make it as easy to screen as possible. Those would be some lifetime ends. The next one over, which I guess is 3, one of the things we talked about at the sidewalk is the ridge height would stay the same as the existing ridge height.
Yeah.
In 4, and maybe 5, but certainly 4, we're talking about a ridge height maximum of 30 We haven't talked about footprint areas yet, but it looks like that in Lot 2, the footprint area is significantly smaller than it is on the other lots.
Right. That's what we had.
That is, what is your, what is your intention there?
That was, that was the idea, I was trying to keep this as smaller than these up here. Basically, this is, I'm not an architect, so I'm not, these are me and my attempt, just trying to put a footprint in the general area, that people will get a concept of what could be done there. We were thinking of, you know, that this is going to be the smallest house out of the, out of the four of these.
What's the area, what is the, what are the dimensions of...
Right now, that one there, it's a... So this, this, the main house spot right there is 50 by 4, so that's $2,000 square foot footprint, and then you have the, the two garage and the breezeway in between, so it's about, probably about a 2,500 footprint, so it's, it's most likely maybe, maybe a 4,000 square foot RGA, maybe it's maybe 4,500, it's a very small house, this footprint that we're showing.
Really?
What?
Having a lot of trouble with that.
They could clearly eliminate it.
I'm sure they'll be coming for an addition after this.
We're not starting to that point yet, yeah.
But that's kind of, that's, but that shows you, that's basically, it's about 4,500 square foot.
All right, but that's something we can, if, if we approve this.
These, these up here are in the, these are like in the, these are in like the 6000 to 6,500 range, and same with this one, I think is like 5,500, you know, those are bigger homes there.
Like Al says, you know, this different part of the point is Lot 2.
Yeah. And I'm not saying I'm like...
Absolutely.
These are me just playing with little segments, it's not as if I'm just excited.
Part of me wants to say forget Lot 2, and just...
Much of me wants to say forget Lot 2, in terms of the development at all.
May I interject something?
Are we allowing that?
Sure.
We met with the Conservation Commission last Tuesday night, and there was some interest in acquiring that land for the town, Lot 2, because it does about the forest trail, and George Bay stopped, there might be some funds available, and we as neighbors might be able to raise some money, and I don't know if there would be, there's a lot of money in CPA, but whether or not that would contribute, but that would keep us all very happy if we could eliminate Lot.
Yeah, sure. That's the one, that's the only one that you would say.
That's the one that, the only one in contention is Lot 2, frankly, and he walked dead inside about it.
That would have, I think that would address all every neighbor's concern.
Every neighbor's concern, truly. That would be our hope.
Four new houses.
Three new houses.
Well, it's a replacement.
Yeah. Well, I guess somebody could live there, because it's the same location.
Somebody's living there now?
Well, they're right there, yeah.
Five lots total, three additional, three additional lots, two existing houses and three additional lots.
We had, I know we had talked about height for these two, for the 30 feet from natural grade, and I did this, basically just me doing, looking at the numbers. I looked at just our past submissions, not just our RGA, just homeowners permits for the past 10, 12 houses that we looked at. Our average house was 31 feet from foundation, it was 34 and a half feet from the natural grade, so that's 2 and a half feet below. That gives, you know, that's person within, you know, and these are a lot of houses that were 3,500 range, 4,000 range, a couple of them, three of them were in front of plenty of, I mean, in front of zone building. So that's, you and I were talking on site, that's the one thing I, I think the 30 feet seems a little tight, I would like to see if we could talk about that just a little bit more, just to see, you know...
What is a little bit more?
Well, I said...
You know the whole reason for this.
Oh, I know, I understand, yeah.
Just don't let people do those brick tests.
Oh, I understand.
From Boston Post.
And what I did is the...
You can assign a, take it from our architect.
Oh, I understand, it's just, when people start looking at that limiting factor, it's one of those things that, you know, the value of the lot can go significantly down, because people aren't going to look at it, go out and, I would not just walk away because of that height. So this, this is basically one of the, one of the crosses we did down from the skating pond area, and this is, this shown is 37 feet, you know, like these are the sidelines through there. This is what I took today, this is the, one of the stakes I had mentioned during the sidewalk down to that area, like, there's actually another stake when you zoom in on the, on the picture, you can kind of see it up on the slope. You know, this is the section we were standing at before we went down that slope, which is basically, here's the wall right there, which is out right there, so we were standing right there with that slope coming down. To me, I'm like, the ridge height is not going to be that much the factor, you know, I mean, if we're, if we're sitting up here because of the, because of the high canopies, you know, if we're, we're 34 feet or 30 feet, like that kind of stuff, I think it's more the, with the main body of the house is what we're going to be worried about, it's going to be the windows and the lights and that kind of stuff, you're going to see the middle of the house through the trees, the main, where the, where the highest point of the house sits, I think most of that's going to be covered, I think it's going to be the middle part, that, a lot of these underplantings that Tom and Kim have worked through, I think that's going to be the most important part. That's, that's basically what I was feeling when, when we were talking about this, and I went and looked at it today, and I kind of just wanted to put those numbers together, because it was just one of those things that I, I just wanted to be able to discuss, that's all.
Well, we went out to the site, took the sidewalk.
Yeah.
We looked at the balloon.
Yeah.
And we, we looked at the various heights, and we figured the 30-foot height of that balloon would mask the greatest bulk from view from any part down the slope.
Oh, without doubt.
Of those houses, and the, these houses want to be invisible. Not hidden, not peek-a-boo, they don't want, they, we don't want it to look like there's anything, it's going to be like hitching posts, that, that would be the ideal sort of model, that, most people don't even know hitching post exists, even though there are, I think there are now five houses back in there. And that would be the, that would be the, the model for this. Not that it, you could sort of see them peeking through the greenery, but they are not there. And that's why the 30 feet, not, in terms of, you know, I hear marketing stories all the time, it depends on who you get for a designer, it always depends on who you get for a designer. If you get a decent designer, a decent designer can work within 30 feet easily, because you've got two 10-foot floor-to-floor heights, plus another 10-foot height for the roof, so you've got the height for, you know, nine-foot-high floor-to-ceiling spaces, and you've still got a good 10 feet for the, for the roof configuration.
Yeah.
So it's not like you're making people stoop to get it through doorways.
Oh, no, no, without a doubt, that's, that's, and that's, that actually is exactly confirmed by the numbers that we had, just even look at the, at the designs that were done, it was, they were 31 feet from the foundation, that's all I'm saying, is that 30 feet from grade is different than 31, 30 feet from foundation, that's all.
I think I can do it, and I don't think it's, I don't think it would make, it would hamstring a decent designer, I mean, I'm sure that there are designers who'd love to have 12-foot-high floor-to-ceiling, but at some point, you have to be this halfway.
Oh, no, and that's what I was saying, I might get...
And this is, after all, a special permit.
And it is, a speech that David gave many years ago, which I've never forgotten, and is standing towards vision to protect the town and its character, and it's not our mission to maximize the sale price of the home.
Right. And I'm just, what I was thinking, more like, like a 32, because if you're knowing 31 feet from, so we're looking at that grade, I'm like, you set that top of foundation basically a foot above the grade.
Well, you're not going to give up, are you?
I was, well, we were saying, if 32 feet, to me, it seems more to keep it with, giving someone like a nine-foot and a nine-foot.
I know, you said that at least five times.
We understand, we understand, not much going to...
Right. It's just, yeah.
And we're, we're talking average grade.
Yeah. Well, no, without a doubt, it's, I know that's a flat lot, so it's, to me, when you, when we do 30 feet, it's going to be 27 feet from the top, the T O C, and that's by the time you're done, it's, it's, it's not going to be the nine-foot, nine-foot, 10 feet, or it's going to be, you know, eight feet, eight feet, and then these little, these little sections.
I mean, I think you can, I honestly think you can do it, and it depends on, it depends on the design style, it may be that some of the second floor part comes in under the roof.
Yeah.
So that you don't have a full-blown colonial attic, but you have, you might, you design it so that you, you bring the eve lines down, you bring dormers out, you, we're giving you an envelope to work to.
Oh, yeah.
It's a design challenge.
Yes.
You know, it's...
But you have to expect me to push back.
It's a...
Yeah. It's, I know, I, I...
You're doing your job.
Yeah, I totally understand what you're saying, I'm like, it's not, and I'm, like I said, I'm not the architect, and I'm going to, basically, I know that you are, so I believe what you're saying, it's just, I'm, I just know from, from all the stuff that we submit all the time, they always know.
You've got, you've got a gold star for really, you know, hanging in there today, but honestly, I know it, and know it will, will work at 30 feet, and, and it was exactly what was right, standing there on the site.
Yeah.
It's not a matter of this drawing and lies of the section, it was what we were looking at out there, and that's, means a lot.
Yeah.
It does.
Steve and Roy were talking, I hate me to talk, and I can't hear you, what would you say? You know, something to add, I know there's something to add.
That's none of your business.
And we were just commenting on the fact that it's adjacent to a business district.
Oh, well, that was great.
Well, looking at the butter in my overton, part of the butters are in the business district.
The butters are me driving through town, that's the butters.
Where do we need the W S? Well, this is, this is a special permit here, for density and calculation.
No, that's been done long enough.
No, this is the flex plan. So this, we have to nail this guy down, and that, in this case, it means ridge heights, it means footprints, and...
It means the question mark on Lot number 2, or the size of the house that we would permit on Lot number 2, 4,000 seems a bit large.
And one of the lessons we've learned from Sears Road was, you want to nail all the four corners in.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise...
So tight, right down to the design.
We might as well talk about Lot 3 too, on the sidewalk, we'd like a little flexibility in the footprint, we basically made promise to the Moslems that this house will never cross a line roughly in this area, so they wouldn't move, but I think it was suggested ridge height and footprint in terms of placing the new house in the cubility of the building, we didn't have a problem with the ridge height, but we'd like some flexibility on the footprint, 5, 10 feet, it would certainly do it.
Mostly towards the, and just, just towards the front.
Towards in, not...
Lot, lot this side in, and then everything, any addition would go that way, or the entire house would move that way.
It's not like you're situated now for once.
You haven't actually seen it though, David, it's, it's one of these things you have to actually go look at, we can try to pick that specific, yeah.
That's the uphill side.
Yeah, that's...
So what does that mean for...
Well, this is, this is that ledge cut right here, so this is the grade getting cut down through there, so it's, what happens is, it's, it's the same front yard, so we move it across, it's still a side low garage predominantly, it's still going to be that, it's just one of those things where someone might want, you know, a porch in the front, they might want something else in the front, like that kind of stuff, we don't want to say this exactly is the footprint, because if this comes forward, like we're showing right now, where this porch and stairs that comes through that area in the front of the house, you know, we want some leeway to be able to come forward of that footprint.
I think the whole deal is, I remember sort of walking up there, that there's some beautiful riquewi walls.
Yeah, right here.
No?
Right here.
To the front, when you're coming up to the driveway, all the way through there, and there were trees and other plantings that were really worth...
It seemed a tough one.
And in fact...
There it is.
My colleague has them here, so we were interested in, kind of, I mean, this was kind of our ideal house, a little terrain, always, house fit with the land, it's just what we've been yapping about all night with everybody else and doing battle, so we would like to honor that tradition somehow. I'm not sure if you can, um...
Well, I think that, it's, to me, using this driveway through the section, it's probably always going to be a garage on the, so it's still going to be working with the terrain, it's more of, someone might not, you know, they might want to just expand just a little bit in the front, and then lose a section in the back, like that kind of, that's what we're thinking about.
As long as it's, keeping what we really like about that.
And then the rest of it, I'm like, this is the limit of work, that's basically that exact, you know, going around the fence in the back of the house, like all that stuff, I'm like, that's all, that limit of work is based on all that, the ledge cut they did originally runs right, you can see it runs right on top of the ledge.
Cool.
Yeah.
You're not sure how much you could extend, and that's why I think we have to actually go back and take a look.
How much would it change the land form?
Didn't we say plan approval anyway, so?
Yeah, no, some maneuverability here, that's, I'm not asking for 50, I want like 5 or 10.
And even if someone went and did something like this, this porch comes out, stairs go down, I'm like, this wall doesn't change, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I'm like, it might be something like that, that simple, that, it's just something they want to expand on the house instead of, because that front entry, there's nothing to it, and someone, if someone wants to sit out there, you know, you know, that kind of stuff, so it's, we just don't want to be stuck in that one little area, that we want to give it some, some kind of...
All right, so what you're saying is, we wouldn't move to the, towards Boston Post Road, that foundation would stay, that...
Yeah, basically hold the back line.
That we, you would like to ask the board to respectfully consider perhaps moving towards...
No, five, or, adding like a, like what we did on Sunny Woods, doing like a building box that's basically, you know, 10 feet in front of us, something like that.
More shake his other walls out there.
We have to, I, we do have to go look at that, but we have to look at that before we actually came down with a...
Yeah, but once you say that's okay, that's what's going to happen.
That's true, absolutely.
Yeah, we can look at it.
Well, I know you're going to consider this again your September meeting, so we thought we'd at least give you a little data for our sidewalk for us.
Yeah.
And, yeah. One of the reasons for also sort of this timing of having this meeting is so that over the summer, they can start doing the work they need to do to locate utilities, drainage, and all that stuff, and provide them directions on what other things to be working on, so specifically, that and that lot seem to be the ones that the board has given some, some guidance as far as either dropping a lot, or, I mean, it almost seems like you're indicating that you need a whole...
Well, are we happy with the road? The, the new roadway, I mean?
I think it's, it's where it has to be.
That's where it has to be, okay, I mean, that's actually a big, there, that's a long time to come up with the optimum kind of road.
Yeah, that's been the size of the lot.
Yes, yeah, Tom, yeah, you would know, you would decide, you would do some of that.
And if there's like six iterations of that.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, so, I mean, to even say we're happy or satisfied with it is kind of a big...
It looks, it looks right now, I mean...
It has a good feel.
It has a good feel, yeah.
I think the idea of also consolidating the entry roads at once, that right now, that whole area, looking up at the two driveways is pretty miserable, so having a single entry is going to make a big difference, and where the old driveway is planted out. I had one additional comment, in looking at the planning schedule, we did prescribe a percentage of conifers in terms of percentages, and you specify quantities on there as well.
Yeah.
On the intermediate plantings, you give sizes and species recommendations, but not quantities.
Yeah, that's, we, at the time, per our design, there was nothing, we didn't discuss, we just had those little area, the secondary plantings, there wasn't a number that we had associated with it per and after all the time.
I think we ought to nail that down.
Yeah.
And something, and look at the sizes and the distribution system more carefully as well, and also evergreen versus...
The same way we did the primary?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so we should work on that.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be for site plan review as well?
Yeah, this is for the overall, sort of, pre-site plan review landscape design, and then that gets filled in later with more stuff, right?
Round brush and the...
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just, I'm so pleased, that is one of the prettiest meadows in that area, I'm just, I'm so pleased that if we can't find a private money to buy that lot, that the house is kicked back, because it is just so beautiful.
It's beautiful land.
It's a wonderful vista when you walk through there, so it's well worth it.
It's right behind my red barn.
Which is part of the pretty vista.
Yes.
Well, you know, that's another comment, is that the red bar and stable end faces the meadow, and the way this building is now proposed, the gable end faces out, so you basically have the gable ends facing each other, as opposed to having the flat part of the roof or the sloped part of the roof parallel to the roof, so that's, I think, a real advantage too.
Yeah.
So this is by far...
It's a better location to have a block in the middle of the site.
Yeah, it doesn't take a ton of metal.
I mean, 4,000 square feet, I know that sounds like a cottage, but it's...
I'll bet my ass it is.
Yeah, mind killing.
And the downstairs and rooms, kid down there.
Oh, what?
Back.
Oh.
It's got plenty of...
Boomerang tile.
All right, so, yes, is...
I have a question, if I may, um, second question, this road, is that going to be owned by all the property, eventual property owners, is that it, so it's like a, so there'll be a...
Condom owner.
Right, okay, so, I mean, I assume there's some sort of condominium type, okay, and is it also, this is this flexible development, so that means that you have to show that you can build conventionally before you can, okay, that was just checking my information. I'm sure you know about, you know, the Kendall Green area where they have a, some extra property which is owned by everybody. If the deal with the town buying Lot 2 doesn't work out, although that's certainly something that maybe you could wait for before, I mean, approving the road now, I'm not telling what to do, but I mean, you said that's a big deal, so that's a great step, and then before the finalization of other details like the individual, individual lot developments to see what happens with Lot 2, if the town doesn't buy it, or otherwise preserve it, could it be part of the communal ownership along with the road like the Kendall Green? like the Kendall Green? Am I saying everything? It's not Kendall Green.
You're describing a community project with this common area, and the ownership structure.
Could be done, but I don't think, it's not, I don't think it's something we can prescribe, kind of.
Well, well, one thing we could do, though, is say, if we don't think a house should go there, the millhouse goes there, and then the question is, what happens to that land? Does anybody buy it, is it worth anything, or does, and you'll have to keep it? And one way I guess you could do is say that each of the remaining three property owners buys an interest in that parcel or something.
Well, they get an interest, well, again, using the Kendall Common model, they get as part of their deed a share. I don't know that it's, you know, physically divided, it's a share in the ownership and therefore use. And it's interesting, because the issue of the assessed value of it was a big, you know, big fight, because they say it's not worth anything, because they can't do anything with it.
Correct.
And the assesses don't think that naturally.
I do think it'd be interesting to do some pursuing, some talks perhaps, with some of you guys about, you know, somehow making this into Conservation Act, something like that. Because I'm getting the feeling that our board is not real happy about any house on lot two.
So the... All or as tough as I challenge.
So when you're approaching that, that it doesn't look like it's a strong possibility that we'll approve that home, that maybe changes the impetus to doing some more hardening and talking, or at least getting started on it? I mean, it's interesting that Mr. Bates was...
George is, he is the one who suggested this.
So he's interested.
He didn't take a low key last, you know, Tuesday night, he couldn't come right out with us, but he had talked to us privately about it. And he said there is a lot of money, CPA money, but whether or not the town would go along with that is the question. And obviously, Anne O'Neill wants as much money as she can get for this property. Comes down to dollars and cents for her, I can understand that, and she's the owner.
Anyway, for the record, I think our original landscaping plan on that property boundary was a lot thicker. It was very extensive, and it's not bad, so we're, we're happy to go for it.
No, no, that wasn't the point, the point was the meadow, and the blue scape, when you walked up, I mean, there's trails through there, it was the blue scape, they're trying to preserve a little meadow, and western, I suppose.
Well, there's a big meadow behind that house from ten acres of wood.
And then there's all the conservation land to the left up there, is that correct?
Yeah, that's force and trail that led into the town.
That was given by...
Willis family.
The Willis family, which is now enjoyed by Ms. O'Neill.
Yes, as it could after her, we could perhaps develop all that.
You could have developed that, right, so there's, it's insane.
Yeah, so this is, these are the...
Mashing perhaps could be done.
They're the trails, I don't know, this is that lot right there.
Well, I mean, has, maybe we shouldn't get into this, if that's the case, you know, I'm sure you'll say, but has she thought about asking prices for these parcels at all?
I don't think she's gone that far.
Hasn't gone that far.
Just to get an idea.
I mean, it would be helpful to know what, how high the bar is for the town's purchasing that parcel, if it elected to do so.
I pointed out to her, because we sold the Sunday Woods to the town at way under market value. I was giving to my children and my nieces and nephews and so forth, and so I pointed out to Anne that she could get a tax deduction for, you know, if we couldn't meet the value of the property, then that would be a tax deduction for her, because in a sense, it would be a gift from her to the town. But her lawyer said this would not be a financial advantage to her, and I don't understand why not.
I don't think it's much more of a financial advantage for her to handle a sold lot.
Exactly, obviously, obviously.
Let us, you know, we're not making any decisions here tonight.
No.
Me or you, so let us have another crack at this, and try to bring this information to you when you're in September. You may not be able to get talked into it, but give us a chance, we'll see where we are.
Well, that's fair enough.
That's fair, yeah.
But then that's the, you know, golden, ridge heights on the hill, three lots, I'm glad you liked the road.
There are a lot of other good things, a lot of good things, a lot of good work's been done.
May everybody evolve, by all the people.
I think the laying out, as it was done for the site inspection, was terrific, actually. You see the big thick ribbons, it's still this skinny little one, so good move.
It definitely helps to see it in the day.
Boy, Tom, you're really parsimonious with the phrase, aren't you? All right, so we'll meet again.
We'll continue.
Yeah, I mean, we have to at least continue until a date certain, and then we just got to figure out what deliverables are coming back, and whether or not, you know, we actually are ready for that date, or, you know, just reschedule.
Do you have the date of the September meeting as yet?
Well, this is, what would you suggest?
I mean, I, we don't have anything technically scheduled yet for the, we have a lot of things floating in the air, so I just would end up saying that schedule is for eight o'clock on September tenth.
And then, if there's a change, I mean, maybe you guys are working on something big, and you can't make the September tenth meeting, but we can...
I think it's probably going to be necessary to ask you all to come again for the sidewalk. I don't think that we'll be ready for that.
So maybe the sidewalk would be earlier in the month, and then the meeting would be later.
We're going to build a shack up there, thirty-four and a half feet.
Get that balloon to the full height. You can't do a perfect...
Do you want to do a sidewalk right now? Would you like to do a sidewalk right now?
Well, I mean, we can sort of, tentatively, I mean, September, we can just look at it like that, while it actually ends up being difficult, because I don't know if everyone's back. The week prior, which is the day after Labor Day, September third, you know, we could look at later on in the date. It may mean the consultants have to look and see if they're available for another morning that week. Yeah, if we push it to a, you know, Wednesday or Thursday this far in advance.
I already have, that piece already...
Otherwise, it's the week before Labor Day.
Right, can we have the sidewalk on the tenth?
Yeah, why couldn't we do the tenth?
Because I mean, it's on that same morning.
Yeah, it's not like we're going to, like, they're going to solve a design problem.
No.
If we gave a week.
Okay, so sidewalk one through five, concrete.
Yep, about eight o'clock.
Okay, and that'll be eight AM on September tenth.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coffee, anyone?
Come on, come on in. Funny, you're going to take a home, aren't you?